Council of Pecos City Regular City Council Meeting to Order. Today is Thursday, November 13th, 2025, and it is 5:30 PM. At this time, we're going to have Councilwoman Carrasco do our invocation and Councilwoman Aronan lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
In the name of Jesus, I invoke the power of divine retribution upon all wicked forces currently conspiring against the city. I command every demonic entity to depart from this location in the name of Christ. The righteous that successfully claim this territory, no weapon devised against it will find success. As these critics throw their flaming arrows of consistent fire, what they fail to realize is that many of us have the shield of our Lord Jesus Christ, which extinguishes their personal attacks. It will not discourage this council in the direction that has been written for this community. When a soldier of Christ is obedient to his Savior, no criticism or personal attacks will discourage us from our mission. God is in control, and we trust Him, and God will always reward the righteous who obey Him. Lauren, I ask you today to guide us in wisdom and patience to lead this community in the right direction. Lord, I ask that we put all our differences aside and come together for the better of this community, to practice what we really preach and express love to one another. In the name of Jesus, I bind Satan from operating over the political scene of this community, and in Jesus' mighty name I pray, amen.
Amen. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, if you have your cell phones, please put them on silent. I'm going to open the floor for public comments. This is a time for residents to share with the council any comments concerned and/or complaints that they may have. It is asked that each person limit their time to three minutes, as we do have several scheduled agenda items to attend to this evening, and for record-keeping purposes, please stand at the podium and state your name.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. My name is Mike Autamah. Kind of here, wearing two hats, I guess, one on behalf of the ESD and one as a citizen of Pecos. Speaking to you tonight in regards to Item F4 on the agenda, which is believed is the AirMedCare Network Membership. I have two reasons to talk to you. One is to make sure that the city understands that the ESD, in partnership with the city and some of the other tax entities, have already purchased that membership for its citizens, which includes the workers. I also want to make sure that you understand that I'm in no way advocating that you not supply benefits for your employees. I think it's great that the city is looking for new ways to attract and retain employees. Benefits is one of those. So with the membership that we have already purchased, the district pays $89,000 a year. This is year three or four that we've done it so far. It covers anyone that lives in or works in the county. If you're picked up in the county or any of the contiguous counties, with the exception of Eddie County in New Mexico, any of the Texas counties that touch us, you're covered. It covers everyone in the household that lives with you. So first, I want to make sure you guys understood that. So what caught my attention on the agenda was the $55,000 price tag, which is really, really high, considering with our agreement with AirMedCare, citizens can upgrade their local membership that we provide to a national membership for only $55 per household, $45 if you're a senior citizen. I'm almost there. $55 per household, not per person. So if you have employees that are married that both work here, or, you know, their kids work here as well, it covers their entire household, so it's not per person. So if the city wanted to upgrade their employees' membership to a national coverage, that's only, I'm assuming you have about 170 employees when you're fully staffed, that's $9,300, far from $55,000. If the city wanted to buy outright the full memberships for all of their employees, that's only $16,000, again, far away from the $55,000. My understanding is tonight's purchase may be for a multi-year, three-year agreement. Well, even if you take that by the three years, that's only $42,000, and that's if you're going to pay the full amount. Remember, the district with the city, the school, I'm sorry, the hospital, you don't have to pay the full amount. You only have to pay a fraction of that, that $55 per household. So I would encourage the city to really dig into where that $55,000 comes from. Lastly, I will say this. We suffer with this at the district. We look for ways not to incentivize employees to live far away. Most of our employees live in El Paso. We want people to move to Pecos. We want people to move to Reeves County, invest, right, buy houses, you know, property taxes.
Your comments?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you.
Do we have any other public comments?
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Ernie Gonzalez with EMC Strategy Group. I want to thank all of the members of the City Council that participated in the Washington, DC trip three weeks ago. It seems like I, I think I've seen most of you every week for the last three weeks, but the DC trip was very successful, as you know. I applaud all of you that went and kept up with the schedule. We had a lot of meetings, as you know, and I think it's important for the constituents to know that we met with key committees of the House of Representatives, including key members of the United States Congress and the United States Senate. It was a pleasure to get with Senator Ted Cruz for that Tuesday meet and greet, and then certainly the visit that we had with Congress and Henry Grant. As you know, he was one of the six Democrats that joined the Republicans last night that approved the extension of our government that will expire on January 30th, so the negotiations will begin, and I'm glad that we went before to plant the seed on the things that the city needs, and so thank you very much. I also want to let you know that we've already scheduled our spring trip for February 17th through the 19th, so we'll be giving you out more details about the trip very soon. The other thing that I want to mention, and I did provide an update that was emailed to you all earlier, and you should have a copy of that, on the back page on Item Number Seven, I just want to bring it to speed on what's going on with the Regional Mobility Authority. We've had a lot of traction on that, and on Monday, David Garcia, the transportation consultant, will secure his final letter of support for the creation of the RMA. We are hoping that by the end of this month, the application will be submitted, and then we will begin our lobbying with the Office of the Governor, the Texas Transportation Commission, and TechStop. The good thing is that we've already secured support from our Congressman, our State Senator, and our State Representative, and we've communicated our request to Alvin New, who is originally from Pecos and serves as the Chairman of the Texas Transportation Commission. We've also shared our wishes to create the RMA with the new Chief Engineer for TechStop, which is Carl Johnson, and the Executive Director of TechStop, which is Mark Williams. So I feel really good, confident that we're going to move forward with this. Once it's created, the Governor will appoint a Chairman that's from Reeves County to serve as the Chairman of that, and each of the government entities, the county will have two representatives, the EDC will have one, and the city will have one. And so it'll be a collection of, a total of five board members, and then they will have an Executive Director, an Engineer, a Project Manager, and an Administrative Assistant. You're going to receive more details about that. It's going to be forthcoming. Very excited, and you'll make sure that, we'll make sure that you're completely kept up to date on the status of the RMA. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Mayor, Councilman, Councilor. My name's Larry Longoria. I'm here about the proposed annexation of the Leep Block 72 on the north side of Pecos. We went over this a year or two ago. We did not want to be annexed. There's nothing the city can give us that we don't already have. This is on a grandfather clause, but the new law says we can do it by voting. The people that want to be annexed, they have the option to vote. I know the grandfather clause is there. Why did they make the new law? So people have a choice of what's going to happen with their property and their lives. This can be stopped here if the council votes, can no longer proceed with this, and not, I have petitions that we used last time that we can use again to sway the council to stop this. There's nothing that they can get, like I said, there's nothing they can give us that we already have. I feel the efforts could be used for the city on other efforts, on other things that need to be repaired. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments?
My name is Monica Flores, longtime Pecos resident. Once again, thank you very much, just to say thank you for the agenda F11 on the noise, the problem with the noise with our logo bar here. Thank you for keeping this issue open so we can all come to an understanding that will be good for all of us. You know, there has to be a middle ground, so thank you for keeping the conversation going, promote open and consistent communication. Thank you, I love that.
Any other public comments?
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm Xavier Rivera with AirMedCare. I'd just like to say that, appreciate y'all's consideration in moving forward with the business plan that's actually going to be executed under a discount for each city employee. There's different circumstances to our membership benefits, one of which, thank God, nobody had to use it, but I'll ride a town recently. So some of us who do work out of town, it gives us peace of mind on actually that financial security and less exposure to the burden of having those types of medical event costs. We've discussed this, I think this is the fourth time I've been here, to answer any questions and to make sure that y'all know that we are part of the community. We service the community 100% with all medical flights, and being over 14 counties, again, I wanted to take care of my home community first. I was born and raised here. I'm proud to be here, and thank y'all for serving. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Yes, ma'am. I don't know if this is a comment or a plea, but I don't know if some of you've noticed around Eddie Street by Lincoln and Madison and in front of Bill Caesar's and over on 285, there's some people, middle of the night, doing donuts in the highway and also at strikes. I implore those that are doing it to stop. You're going to get yourself hurt, or you're going to lose control and run into a house. God forbid something happens. I know, I was, we were all young, we all did crazy things. We've lived a long life, some of us, done the, I'm not going to say the S-word, but done things, you know? Some of us got away with it, others didn't. I knew some friends that lost their lives for crazy stunts. Please, again, I implore you to stop before you hurt yourself or hurt somebody. Lastly, thank you veterans again, those of you here, I see you at the dinner.
My blessing.
And now, again, thank you for your service. Again, those that served in Vietnam, my greatest, greatest admiration and gratitude and apologies for a country that didn't welcome you, if you got one. That's it.
Any other public comments?
I got one after that.
I would like to see a spreadsheet, you know, deals showing, the one we're going to vote on tonight for the air amendments, and with the ESDs too. I'd like to see a little more in depth of those also. And put them both together, and see which one's going to be best for the performance.
Any other comments?
Xavier Rivera again. The spreadsheet is pretty simple. We offer a business plan for business in large entities. The agreement that we have with the ESD is strictly for citizens who reside in Reeves County. That utilization of medical flights is for Ward, Jeff Davis, Culberson, and Pecos County. Outside of that area, we're not covered. We're not. ESD's not going to pay for it, and we're going to bill somebody. So the whole purpose of protecting city employees, once again, is to remove the burden and exposure of that financial, you know, hardship that could take place down the road. And again, less than 55 grand, it's going to cover three years for every city single and one. employee. And thank you, Mike, for sending me that $89,000 check to cover every Reeves County resident. Appreciate that. Again, thank you for having me.
I'm ready for, is Cassandra here today, newspaper? No? Ernie saved me a lot of time. So Ernie did a great job, him and his team in Washington. That's something positive I wish we would have seen on the newspaper that went unnoticed. But this group right here, when Councilman Carrasco is not at a council meeting, he's given his time. And you see this group of young kids here, didn't have coaches this year. So as busy as we were, my wife and I stepped up to coach, and this Councilman Sedanha experienced this pleasure. But it is a great pleasure that I recognize and celebrate these remarkable accomplishments of two teams that you're looking at today. The season ended three weeks ago, and these teams are still fighting for a championship. These are the Mini Monsters and the T-Rex. From the outset, the two teams have demonstrated exceptional dedication, teamwork, and sportsmanship. They've engaged in intense competition throughout the double elimination tournament, with two notable instances where they advanced to two double overtime games, 19 and 19 twice. A heartfelt appreciation extends to our assistant coaches and parents, who have provided unwavering guidance and mentorship to help step up and help me coach these kids. As mentioned, these kids are always an honor and a pleasure to work with, but we had stepped up this year because they didn't have any coaches. The unwavering spirit and charisma of these young athletes have been extraordinary experience for myself, and I am honored to be their coach. As you're aware, I wear mini hats, and tonight I am deeply connected with them. As you see this crazy look you share here, they're called the Mini Monsters. They're playing tonight for the championship, and Coach cannot be there because Coach has got to take care of business here as well. So I like to wish them luck and go Mini Monsters.
Are there any other public comments?
A lot of feet.
Okay, we're going to close public comments. We're going to go to our consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the October 23rd, 2025 regular city council meeting. Review the October 2025 strategic plan report. Review the expenditure report. Review the fire hydrant report, and review the May 2025 to August 2025 airport activity report. Do you have Kelvin on the line if we have fire hydrant?
If we have a question.
Do they have, does one have a timetable kind of, when they're going to start working on it quick and when do they think they can get their part done?
Kelvin, do you know that?
Yeah, I do. I didn't know if I was live yet, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Kelvin Ridgely. Right now, I did provide you guys with the written updates, but the only thing I left out is the timetable, right? We're looking to complete this project within the next 50 days. I'm talking with Randall from Barmore at the end of last week. He is aware of the timeline, so we are pushing to have this done within the next 50 days because we do understand the importance.
And this will give us, give us 100%, all of our hydrants are working?
Absolutely, man. I don't like to use 100% because I don't think there's anything that's like that 100%. But this will get us whatever, a little bit less than 100%. The delay in this process is us installing valves in each and every one of those fire hydrants because I'm sure by now you guys are aware that any time there's a water leak, the most important piece of that is being able to isolate those water lines so that we can properly fix the leak. So we're installing valves in each one of those fire hydrants to make sure that they are equipped in the event of a leak.
Anybody else have any other questions on that one? Do we have Kelvin here?
I got a question before. Charles, I'll page four, but top one by, he doesn't have to protect kids and Todd for $56,000. Is that an engineering thing or?
They're the ones that are managing, the lead engineer on managing the way water treatment, but that's who's doing it. That's it. Those are the ones that gave us a really good dinner at the amount.
Okay, I remember that. Page eight, Cyclone Ball Cocks, $355,000. Is that just covering the?
That's a quarterly funding piece of it.
Covering the losses? Okay. Have we gotten the financial, I think we got one a couple of months ago?
We did. And I have one that will be on the next month's meeting, I just got it. Or it'll be next week's meeting. Excuse me, because we got a next, I mean, next week.
Unreal. Jumping ship, a strategic plan, number two, economic and community development. I buy such courses, the tournament and event opportunities that can attract visitors to the, I'm not going to read it all, but don't really see that. Lots of me, really.
You should start seeing it pretty soon. Savannah's doing a good job, and she's been the one that's taken over that and worked with Tommy on some of that. And I think that you're going to start seeing some of that collaboration and things happen. I mean, some of y'all were able to go, and she did pull the first risen cutting that's happened in the community in a while. Historically, the Chamber of Commerce did that. She's taken that on and making sure that the new businesses feel welcome, making sure that you're promoting it.
I'd like to see at least monthly event schedules or whatever we can, because we're falling way far behind with the Cyclone people, the management firm, you know, Savannah's got on board, I know, I understand that, but I'd like to see some goals set, some strategies moving forward. Of course, this thing.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And on this, number two, the strategic plan report. You know, it's great, the plan is great. But what I'd like to see is, how are we going to get to those questions that are being asked? How are they, what's the timeframe for some of the stuff that's supposed to be happening? You know, like number three, for instance, is to engage residents, employees, and city department, recording, resolving small but impactful quality life issues. Who's doing that? Who's involved with that? What kind of timeframe do you have for us to, so that we can start seeing not just the plan, but I want to see results? You know, how is that being pushed forward?
Heather's the champion of that piece of it. She's been working with Tommy on it each week. And the process is being implemented right now, so I think probably in the next four to six weeks, you'll start seeing something out there that'll be that way. It's probably the start of the turn of the city, and we'll get to the community that way.
Because one of the things that I'm driving around is, our city is dirty. There's weeds everywhere. I don't know if those businesses, is it their job or is it our job as a city to clean up all them weeds, especially in the entry points coming in from the south end, from those, any entry coming into Pecos, it's an iso. Either we start giving tickets to these people, and they start paying fine, they're slapping and it ain't working. And it's dirty, you know? I go over there to the Burger King, and I got weeds all around that deal. We went to the ribbon cutting this morning, and I was looking at around, all that stuff. Somebody needs to start taking care of that. It's either our employees or the businesses themselves, they need to be pushed to take care of that because the city's growing, and with it, it's going to bring problems, but we need to start taking care of it now. And everybody needs to start stepping up and doing their part. And part of this is the citizens, you know? You know, I go around my house picking up trash and throwing it, I hate it, weeds and all that, but if we don't do something about it in the main corridor, that's the first thing they see. And we got companies coming in like Taco Bell did their part. There's other, with everything that's being constructed, we need to really shore up that deal, you know, especially in that area. But this other area is coming in from Barstow, that's a junker right there with all that trucking and all that. I mean, over here on the east side, coming in from the east side, you know, we got, and I don't know how the ordinance reads, but we got a wrecking yard, and the cars are in front by the street. That shouldn't be. I mean, if it's going to be a corridor clean, and then we're trying to clean up that area, that land that we bought, it's going to look in bad. So that's a stuff that we need to really shore up, and this strategic plan is great, but I want to start seeing some results. And I want to start seeing some people working out there, not just driving around.
Anything else? Would not Mayor make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Graham, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Do we need Kelvin anymore, or did he hang up?
He did.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to our non-consent agenda. Item F1, discuss, consider Resolution 25-11-01R. A resolution canvassing the November 4th, 2025 general election results. Strategic goal five, promote openly consistent communication. Wendy Luneck, City Secretary.
Mayor and Council, in your packets, you will find Resolution 25-11-01, and as well as the election results for the November 4th, 2025 general election. In this resolution, we will be formally adopting proposition number one, concerning the reauthorization of the local sales and use tax at the rate of 3/8ths of 1% for the maintenance and repair of municipal streets, is hereby declared approved and adopted. Proposition number two, compensation, amending the current City of Pecos Charter, compensation of members of the city council, Article 2, Section 2.09, with a total of 130 votes for and 434 votes against. Proposition two is hereby declared failed. And in your packets, you'll also find the number of votes for proposition one, which were 316 votes for with 245 votes against.
I think the motion may be approved, Resolution 25-11-01R.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilman Carrasco, to approve Resolution 25-11-01R as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F2, discuss, consider rescheduling the December 25th regular city council meeting. Strategic goal five, promote openly consistent communication.
Mayor and Council, this item is for your consideration of the rescheduling of the December 25th, 2025 regular city council meeting due to Christmas. The city hall does plan to be closed. I am recommending we move the regular city council meeting to December 18th, 2025, if you, if that's the direction you'd like to move.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the date prescribed by City Secretary, December 18th. No objection.
I'll second. I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilwoman Torquay, to reschedule our December 25th meeting to December 18th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F3, discuss, consider Resolution 25-11-02R. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a, enter a agreement, a contract with West Waste Quip for the purchase of 100 three-yard side-load metal trash containers at a total cost of $91,500. Strategic goal seven, enhance Pecos' infrastructure network, Virgi Benegas, solid waste management, administrative assistant. That's a mouthful.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you will see the attachment of the memorandum of understanding with Reeves County. I did not include the quote for the purchase of the dumpsters and the, the charges based on the historical usage in the past two years for road and bridge, so I will give those to you, you can pass them around. Okay, I'm here at this meeting to present Resolution 25-11-02, which authorize the city manager to enter a contract with Waste Quip to the purchase of 100 three-yard side-load metal trash containers. The supply of the three-yard dumpsters have been fully depleted. And to fulfill service requirements, we have temporarily utilized 25 four-yard dumpsters in their replacements. Funding for this purchase comes from a $125,000 allocation from Reeves County Precinct 1, with $91,500 specifically designated for these containers. In exchange, the city will provide the county with free landfill use for two years and access to the city's marquee for two years at no cost.
These only going to go in Precinct 3?
One.
Precinct 1? How many do we have left in the city to replace, if we could replace the rest of?
We have no three-yard containers at this moment. We are utilizing our four-yard metal containers to replace the three-yard containers for other upcoming customers.
So to refresh my memory one time, we had to replace the remaining of Pecos. How many does that leave us with, give or take?
How many metal containers are remaining?
How many, if we had to replace the cylinder ones with the metal ones, how many do we need to cover the whole city?
I would have to circle back on the number, because we have to write a couple ones back.
We provided 75, and now with Precinct 1 funding the 100, so there will be 175 metal containers on Precinct 1, which is the east.
No, I'm saying the whole town.
Oh, the whole town.
If we replace the cylinder containers, the whole community, how many would that put us at, 200, 300?
I think your estimate, 300, 400.
Have we allocated any funds in the budget for that, or anything to replace, and if so, how many?
Our next meeting, we're going to replace 200.
So that leaves us with 150 left over?
Yes.
How do we allocate those to scatter them throughout the community instead of just, I mean, I know, we're grateful for Commissioner Moore for what she did for Precinct, to step up and help. But if we started distributing, how would we distribute those, just equally among the whole community and then eventually come over and replace the remaining ones?
It would be, as you think it would be, yes, sir.
Okay. Questions? There's any more questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Resolution 25-11-02R.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilman Carrasco, a second from Councilman Sedanha, to approve Resolution 25-11-02R as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. We are going to jump to item F13, team. An update on the local government corporation board.
Thank you, Mayor. With us in the front row is one of our advisors, board advisors. He's actually a softball coach, so we appreciate you women up the agenda. He has a commitment at 7:30 to coach two softball teams. This board is probably going to answer a lot of questions that Councilman Arona had, probably some that Councilman Sedanha had, and Councilman Graham in the past, and anybody else. But this board is an advisory board for the Cyclone complex. It's going to be playing a vital role and a game changer for this community. We need to shift our focus and stop gambling with hot tax dollars on films to draw visitors to Pecos. Used sports holds an immense potential as a catalyst for tourism development. It's a no-brainer. Well-organized and large tournaments can generate substantial revenue, particularly those that attract a large number of teams and families. This influx of visitors can have a positive impact on local finances and evidenced by the. and evidenced by the increased revenue generated by hotels and restaurant profits. I'm gonna get off subject here really quick, but I'll get to my point here. These events attract visitors from various communities. It's crucial that we create a positive impression on these visitors by showcasing the cleanliness and the quality of life of Pecos. Hosting an event and attracting new visitors can provide valuable exposure to our community. This exposure can influence the perception of Pecos both positive and negative. I'm a strong advocate for the revitalization of Pecos and the improvement of quality of life. And I believe that showcasing the town's positive aspects can attract visitors to demonstrate why Pecos is an ideal place to raise a family. Many people are seeking a change from the hustle and bustle of a metropolitan city and are drawn to small towns. It is crucial that we unite as a community to modernize Pecos and provide it with a major face. Now, back on subject. To elevate Pecos' reputation and attract tourism, we have devised a strategic plan. Unlike relying socially on the annual rodeo where they host once a year, we will host major tournaments once a month for now until we get things off the ground, anticipating up to 1,000, 1,500 visitors every other weekend. To ensure the success of this vision, we have restricted, reconstructed the board, appointing a more active and diverse group of advisors from various backgrounds, including sports, business, and tourism. We emphasize the importance of active participation, not merely feeling a seat. So to secure the support of stakeholders, we sought out influential figures in the sports industry. One such individual is Julie Rodriguez. She is the president of US Triple, let me see if I get this wrong again. US Triple S Sports Industry. She is the Midwest and New Mexico sector of the big fish. Last month, I went to Hobbs to establish a relationship with Julie and showcase the unique offerings of Pecos, including photos and videos. Her enthusiasm for the project were evident, and now she's on board to make Pecos one of the pit stops. On the baseball side of things, we have secured the involvement of Tommy Hawkins, the president of Western Region of the baseball team. In our front row, you have David Joe Gonzalez, one of the board members who played a pivotal role in persuading Tommy Hawkins to return back to Pecos as he has a great relationship with Tommy. Mr. Hawkins is regarded as the godfather, no lie, of U-Sports. And his reputation throughout the sports tournaments is impeccable, and he's scheduled to be inducted in the US U-S triple S Hall of Fame earlier this year. His return to Pecos aligns with our vision of establishing a central hub for future tournaments. We must exercise patience and trust in the process. And David will give you more in detail with that in titles. Councilman Arona asked me when we're seeing results. As of now, he is committed to tournaments, David will correct February, April, and July. And this is only baseball, and we haven't even implemented softball. Go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez, you can come up first.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is David Joe Gonzalez. I'm the site manager for Hashmeth Inc., which is a Bitcoin data center out here in Iowa. Recently, I was appointed to help with the Cyclone board. And my relationship with Tommy goes back to the beginning of Cyclone being open. I was the first operations manager for Cyclone. And at the beginning, we had a very good relationship with Tommy. He actually brought 52 teams, I believe, around that number to Pecos with that first tournament. Since then, we haven't been able to see nothing close to those numbers. The thing that people lack understanding with travel ball is that the people don't care what the fields look like. If you've ever been to Abilene, if you've ever been to Hobbs Andrews, you see it. They don't have the best fields. Nothing compares to what we got between Arizona and Dallas. Nothing compares. But the thing that we don't have is the tournament directors. We didn't have Tommy, and we didn't have Julie. Neither one was interested in coming back to Pecos. But over the last month, we've been able to convince Tommy that this should be home for U-S triple S A baseball as well as softball. These are tournaments that bring, I mean, they had 60 teams in Andrews just a few weeks ago. You know, that's something that we should have here. You know, there's no reason why we shouldn't have that. You know, Tommy's come back to the table. He sat down with us. I think we've come up with a good deal for him. He has five dates set. He has one tournament already scheduled for February 28th. And there's already 13 teams signed up for that tournament. It's November, and there's 13 teams signed up for a tournament in February. You know, and we're talking about teams from El Paso, Artesia, Shallow Water, Lubbock, Carlsbad, Hobbs. They're coming from everywhere. We haven't even had our local team sign up yet, or most of the teams from Midland. We're still reaching out to El Paso. El Paso doesn't have U Trip right now. They don't have tournaments, they don't have baseball, they don't have softball. They're looking for somewhere to go, and Midland's too far. So Pecos has a great opportunity to take over travel ball in West Texas. Tommy wants to be in Pecos. We need Tommy here. If y'all want Cyclone to ever be the vision that y'all saw when y'all were first looking at those blueprints and those pictures and having these meetings, we need Tommy back. We need Julie back. We need to make a commitment to them for at least a year. You know, Tommy's committing about five or six baseball tournaments. Julie's probably gonna bring four or five herself. That's 10 tournaments. Each tournament bringing, like you said, 4,000 to 5,000 people per weekend. All that money goes back into the hot tax. You know, that's everybody staying in hotels, that's everybody staying in restaurants. Everybody putting gas to get back home, you know, putting gas when they get here. Gives the parents who live in a smaller town than this an opportunity to see what we're doing out here in Pecos. There's people that haven't been here in 10 years. You know, they would like to see the construction, look what the schools have got now. You know, Pecos is a lot different than it was a long time ago. So, yeah, I just hope that y'all, look at this as a positive and way to get Cyclone back where it needs to be. It's not gonna be concerts, it's not gonna be SFM. It's gonna be this board that's been put together and this council that brings back Cyclone to the success of this region. Thank you.
Any questions? Or do you have any questions?
I have a question. So, I don't know, what was, what's the reason behind these two individuals not wanting to bring tournaments here to Pecos? What exactly happened? What were the roadblocks that they expressed of why this wasn't a destination option for them?
Yeah, so it's never been the fields. The problem is that, basically, SFM, it was a bad investment on the city's part. You know, $27,000 a month to, for a company in Florida to manage a park that they really don't see. You know, they hire somebody to manage it, the city pays for that, and then they have a huge budget that doesn't have anything that's very successful. Tommy didn't wanna come back because of the management. It just sort of boils down to that, he, that relationship, that bridge was burned. He said that he wouldn't come back, Julie's like a daughter of him. So if Tommy's not coming, Julie's not coming. You can bring NSC, you can bring any other organization you want. But Tommy Hawkins is, that's the godfather of travel baseball in West Texas. Like, he's going into the U-S triple S A Hall of Fame in Florida. He's been doing this for a very long time. Where Tommy goes, teams follow. You know, all he has to do is put his name on that tournament, and teams are there. Because it's about the tournament director. He's, he, it's about the vibe at the tournaments, you know? He doesn't have problems at his tournaments, and neither does Julie. You know, they run very well-organized tournaments that, I, my daughter plays travel ball, since she's six, she's 11. We enjoy going to Julie's tournaments. I used to coach travel ball baseball with Michael Baca and Coria. We used to go to Tommy's baseball tournaments, and it was always a good time. And what we have here in Pecos is an opportunity to go beyond that. You know, we've talked about hosting, you know, holding a carnival at the same time that we're having a tournament at Cyclone. You know, it's, and there's possibilities for everybody right now. There's a lot that we can do, you know, even, you know, having a band, but not spending $47,000 on a band. You can spend $2,000 or $3,000 on a cover band. And Tommy will be, thank, that's good entertainment for the parents that are showing up to Pecos. We wanna give them something to do while they're in town. You know, when they're in town, just give them something to do. He's offering us a tournament for 4th of July weekend. You know, imagine having a 4th of July tournament. You know, maybe Liu Hang has the fireworks that same weekend, or the rodeos weren't on that weekend. You know, imagine the amount of people being in town that weekend and what to do. You know, there's a lot of possibilities. Cyclone, you know, it should be hosting playoff games for high school baseball. There's a lot of the stuff that we should be doing. You know, if you've been to Abilene for the Little League State Tournament, you know, the fields aren't the best over there. You know, we could be hosting the Little League tournament, the state tournament one day, not just district or sections. You know, we could be actually holding the Little League West tournament one day here. Those are just things that we have to get out there and go. But yes, I think 2026 is gonna be everything that we've always wanted for Cyclone. I think that money will start coming in this year.
So does Tommy come down and run a tournament?
Tommy is the, is the director of the tournaments, yes. So he's in charge of everything, from umpires, from housing them to feeding them. Like, we have all the money, the money that goes to him. So it's gonna basically be based on performance. If he gets 60 teams to come, then we're gonna pay him X amount. If he brings 40 to 59 teams, then he's gonna get paid that amount, just depending on the amount of teams that he comes. But I really don't see any of these tournaments being less than 40. They're gonna be between 40 and 60. And some of the big tournaments are gonna probably be 60 or more. The question isn't like whether, the question shouldn't be whether he's gonna be able to bring these teams to Pecos. The question is, are we gonna be able to handle the amount of teams that come to Pecos? Because before, we've had to rent the both high school fields to accommodate all the teams that came for the first tournament. We used the softball and the baseball field. Because, and now we have, you know, now that the youth phase is done, and we have the eight fields now, you know, we're turning those three fields into, he's already, has Thomas measuring the distance for the outfield to see how many fields we can place on one. Can we really do three fields on one field and accommodate all the teams?
So you moved a little bit on the mic, David?
Yeah, so you have like eight U teams, 10 U teams, you know, that can be on those smaller fields, that work on that one field where you have three fields on. So you have 11 fields at Cyclone that can be used. You still have Chano Preto, you have Martinez, you have the high school fields. There's about 14 fields in Pecos that we have to host a huge tournament, huge tournament. And we're talking about some of the biggest tournaments that U Trip has and taking them from some of the towns that they usually have in that and bringing them to Pecos.
And they took Hobbs away to come to Pecos.
No.
So Hobbs was taken away to come to Pecos, not to cut you off before I forget. But on our conversation we had yesterday is, he told us Hobbs isn't too happy, but he wants to come back to Pecos because our fields are like no other. And I'm gonna reference something that I, I personally heard in TML training is, I heard all these mayors and city council and saying, how do you grow your community? And 95% of everybody says how you grow your community is in the youth sports by building, and some of them haven't even built a complex. So they're trying to build a complex to attract visitors to there. And we have the complex in which we play, we travel a lot with our girls. But we go to complexes that are so disgusting that I'm like, nobody really cares, but the restaurants are disgusting, the fields are disgusting, and they want the reps, and they're there to play. And they travel from all over the world with RV Spark. And we're not gonna say that there's RVs a lot where it gets away from the hot tax. But, you know, yesterday, there was a hot tax meeting to where they wanted to see a return on their investment. And like I said, it's gonna be a process, and we went for the big fish. We go for the little fish, we went for the well, and we got the well. So all this will come together and how some of the total owners might be seeing an investment on the return. Yeah.
The investment that we made for that complex was to make money, not to how well it's operated. One thing is operating it well, but if it ain't making money, then it's worthless. But that is a beautiful field, and I, I go there a lot. And I've seen, and I've talked to coaches from other, from other cities, and they'd love to come over here. It's just a relationship that, that's been the problem, the relationship that we have.
It was just the relationship. And, you know, me and Tommy, we've always had a good relationship, even in between the three years. You know, I've always had a lot of respect for what he does for youth sports in general. You know, I've been a Little League coach for Pecos since 2015. You know, I coached a team in Barstow. I had, I was the reason that Barstow had that team comeback, since not having one since 99. Then I started to gain the Little League softball going here. So, you know, I, I understand how important U-Sports are, especially to this community. And, and the way that we're growing, this, the sky's the limit with Cyclone. There's nothing that we can't do with it, whether it's U-S triple S A, whether it's high school sports, whether it's college sports, you know, tech, they have spring games. Those are other things that we can look at, is colleges playing a couple of spring games here in Pecos. You know, they do it in Midland at the Rockland Stadium. So there's a lot, more that we can do. I think this board that was put together was a very good idea. I think the people that are on this board are a bunch of great minds, locals, that really care about what happens at Cyclone and here in Pecos. So I think this is the right direction that we have. We have the best builds, we have the best directors. I think we just need to go forward with this U Trip.
So we have to tell you when you have a turn, if that cuts our overhead down quite a bit?
Yeah, so I think Thomas is working on a contract with him right now. And they're gonna go over it and see how it looks. But I don't think, I think, we've talked about it, and we need to put it on paper just so everybody's comfortable and, you know, that it's legit. And I think once it's on paper, then everybody's in agreement.
We were looking at the thing backwards. We were trying to bring bands at 50,000 while we should have been designing a bringing in tournaments. The softball director's asking for 10,000, the other gentleman's asking for 18.5, depending on what they bring in. That doesn't even come close, you get two for the bang of your buck. That's 120 teams guaranteed for the price of one. Tournaments are always a guaranteed sell. People don't care where you play, they just go and they spend the night and they play. And it's, it's so crazy, I've never experienced anything like that until this year, until my daughter started traveling, and I started seeing some of the fields. And I was like, geez, they're playing on these? And then they get rained out and they gotta wait five hours? We don't get rained out.
Yeah.
So, yeah, thanks. Any more questions?
Thank you.
David, thanks for joining us today.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks for what you do.
Okay, since, since we have people here, I wanna go ahead, go to F11, discuss the noise issue on Cypress Street. Mrs. Flores has been here numerous times. I just want, is there any other ideas on how to correct something, the situation? It's, it's, I know it's, it's, it bothers her. I know it wakes her up at night. And I know Trailways has done everything they can do. I mean, they've been very, very, I just don't know if there's any other options? If anybody has encountered any other noise complaints that a situation was corrected or fixed?
Can I? Can I ask you a question?
Just, yeah.
Okay. The, the only thing I've heard, I haven't been to Trailways myself, except one time when I tried to talk to the manager, which got no results at all. But anyway, I've, I've heard that they've added plexiglass, and from what I see, it's plywood. Those are not noise deterrence at all. And I know, I've heard y'all talk, you talk about how they're grandfathered in because that building's been there forever. Yes, it has been, but the sound system has never bothered us like it has now. And I personally spoke to the owner of the property there, the land, and he himself told me that that bar was remodeled a few years ago. And I estimate that that's about the time we started having the noise issue. And I, I don't know if this is true, I myself don't know, but I've heard that the sound system is not the same sound system that they had originally in there before we had the noise issues. So I'm wondering, you know, is the, is the sound system grandfathered in? Or how does that work? If they upgraded the sound system to where now it is bothering the residents around here? You know, and the insulation? I've got family that lives in larger cities, and they tell me that they go to bars, and they're loud, loud when you're inside. As soon as you walk out, nothing. You can hear almost next to nothing. So, you know, what can we do as a community of the neighborhood here to, can we help them? Can we fundraise? Can we find money to help them? You know, we're willing to be good neighbors, you know? I keep saying, we don't wanna shut them down, that's not, we want growth. Yes, I'm all for growth, I love this, you know? I love the traffic, the oil field, the Cyclone, everything, you know? I've lived here all my life, and this is a dream come true. Except for the, not even, not even sleep seven nights a week, you know? We all value our sleep, you know? So that's all I'm asking. You know, to work with them, to do something to, to help them, you know? I don't know, thank you.
And that's, that's why I just wanna know if anybody else had any other ideas because I think we've exhausted all of ours.
I think we have. Speculation might be, there's potential opportunities to put something in there in that open space. And I think if we can get something developed there, and it's gonna take, it's gonna take 12 to 18 months, partner, that it may defray some of the costs. Because right now, when our business partner's not over there, the, the, I think what's causing the issues from Ms. Flores, and I'm not speaking for her because she's the one that experiences a lot of the baseball. And, and the base piece of it isn't gonna hit decimal levels that are above our sound levels. So there's no regulations. Captain, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think from a base standpoint, I don't know if there's a way to regulate the base level.
The decimal readers that we use, the difference between close and loud noises is too different. The decimal meters that we use, the difference between close and loud noises is two different things. The state mandates that it's from eighty-five decimals. We've had our police officers go and use decimal meters. Most of the time, it's about, it includes sixty-five and fifty-seven, which is the reading that they're getting, and they're getting it like right outside, they're at Cypress Street. And that's the problem is, base, if we get the decimal meter and we put it on a base, it won't pick it up because of the way the sound.
It's different.
High volume.
It's infrasound, it's a lot lower.
But it bounces, it moves.
It sounds like screams that will be high, the decimal is of the pitch of it. But in a, in a base, it, base is a lot, you feel it, you feel it in your body and everything, you just can't read it.
That's kind of what I thought. So I think our best option is to try to get something developed there, where you have something that's going to bounce the base off. And because otherwise, I don't know that from an ordinance standpoint, if we have a lot of deal. I, Ms. Flores, I agree with you, when I talked to them about it, I asked them if they could put some insulation in there. That's why they were allowed to put the plywood up, they were supposed to put some soundproofing insulation. I don't know, I haven't been to trouble, so I can't tell you that it's done. But I can tell you that I might walk over there and look at it and see if it's just plywood. If it's plywood, I'll have a conversation, and say, let me see what we can do on that. Absolutely, I have no problem with that.
I was wondering if there was some sort of grant or something that they could apply for to help them remedy the situation? You know, something that we could help with the funding? I know, I'm sure cost is probably prohibitive, an issue. So maybe there's a grant or some sort, maybe it would fall under, I don't know, some sort of development or something that we could look into to, to help them, if they're willing. You know, they put up the plywood thinking that that would probably remedy the situation, and it ended up probably.
Yeah, because what he told me, he was going to put up plywood so he could put insulation in there that would block the sound. I just don't know that it's going to help. Listen to Ms. Flores and then we'll.
Yeah, I live on Willow, and I can, I feel it.
Can you turn down the bass?
Yeah.
They could, I just.
We can't, we can't make them any? That's the issue?
We can ask them.
We can ask them.
I'm not a DJ, but can you turn the speaker's facing away from her house?
Because right now, I think the way they have them, they're facing east, westward. Because the bad stage is over here off of.
Is it?
Cypress.
We can have the conversation, yeah, I can ask.
I think, have they insulated that plywood?
That's what I'm going to go check on, I don't know, they told me they were going to. But I haven't been in there, so I can't tell you, yes, they have or no, they have.
So you can put those, there's one inch of insulation boards, you know, that you can actually put like that?
Yes, sir.
It's better if it's angulated to be able to absorb this speaker's, that sound. Seems like we're being too lenient with these guys. I mean, ideally, I feel bad for our constituent here coming every other meeting to address these problems over and over, and there's no accountability. And, um, common sense, I would assume we're maintaining detailed logs on the law enforcement team with timestamps and video recordings of times we've been out there, correct? On the police department's end?
So what we're doing is, every time our officers go there, they put down a decimal meter, that's where I got the reading from, they put down like Oak and, and Third Street. Put down the decimal meter reading, and then every time that they go, they try to, and then they speak to the owner, and they do turn on the music, but it's just.
For a brief time.
And you have gathered some of your neighbors and some signatures as well, you said, in pass? Yeah, I mean, the next thing we do, I mean, are they saying what they're saying they're doing? I mean, the plywood's not going to work unless you put some, I think they're called M L V padding that is required to absorb the noise. And if they don't want to comply, then we need to get stronger teeth on our ordinance and make sure they comply. Yeah, to be going back and forth, I don't want to feel like, I mean, I know sometimes we feel like we've got bigger fish to fry, but our constituent that comes in here every other council meeting, let's give her the benefit of the doubt, and let's send Griffin or somebody, send somebody out there to go look at it, you know? I mean, I know you've got other frying, you know, things in the frying pan, but send one of your assistants to make sure they're compliant, so we mean business.
Well, and also on a new build, then part of the requirements would be to put that sound insulation. You've got to remember, this was a bus station at one time. So it was, it was.
It was a gas station?
It was a gas station, then it was a bus station. So it's been remodeled numerous times, so that's kind of the issue too, it's an overbuilding, so. Maybe we can just go check with them.
Let's get more aggressive.
Okay, we will go to item F-four, discuss, consider resolution twenty-five-eleven-oh-three R. A resolution ratifying the purchase of full medical flight memberships through AirMed Care Network for county Pecos City staff for a total amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars. Strategic Goal Six, Sound Governance and Physical Management, Sarah Nichols, the Director of Human Resources.
Mayor, Council, at the last city council meeting, you all approved to enter into a contract with AirMed, and that was not a budgeted item, so this is just to ratify that, what you all approved, so that we can get it in accordance with our budget and allocate the funds.
I would still like to see in comparison, to see which one, side by side, to see which one's best for employing. I'd like to be able to, if we could table.
And the employees already have, like, how many, covered, right?
I'm sorry.
The employees already have that covered.
Yes, so I have the contract, and I have, Mayor, Council, so we just resigned the contract with AirMed Care back in October, and it, it stays all along the region. I mean, it states that any, any individual who resides or is a transient worker within the boundary. So it covers all of your employees that live in the county or live in El Paso and work here throughout the week. They're covered, that was one of our big pushes when we got this, because we have a lot of workers that travel in and out that do a lot of good for Reeves County, but just don't live here. So they are covered, if you live in or work in, so the coverage is the same.
Well, if we just, that's what we need to see, we need, we need to see them side by side, so we can look at them.
Well, I'll get your information, and if I miss a beat, then I can create a spreadsheet.
We'll be happy to provide anything.
I'd like, I'd like to motion to table this until the next meeting, because I'll be, you know, get something, show us.
Yeah, I'll send the contract to Mr. then.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilman Arona, to table this item until our next meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hope the record show the motion carries. Item F-five, discuss, consider resolution twenty-five-eleven-dash-oh-four. A resolution of intent to begin the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two annexation in the county Pecos City Annexes, Annexation Service Plan, Strategic Goal Five, promote open and consistent communication, Charles Lino.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Charles Lino, City Manager. This item is, Mayor and Council approved the, the contract with, for the annexations moving through twenty-twenty-eight. This is the one, just to start the process that we have to do for the twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two annexation plan. So this is a resolution that we have to start with, to start the process, to go through the notification and the note, the mailings that we have to send out related to all of the landowners and property holders in affected areas.
Of course, if we have not notified, then this is going to be on.
This is a notification, this is the beginning when the notifications are going to go out.
This is when they're all.
Then you have public hearings and stuff like that.
Oh, okay, so we, we still.
This is the beginning of the process, yes, sir.
I'd like to see what the cost benefit would be to annex, and I guess this is one north.
It is, yes, sir. Some north and some south.
Four oh four, four oh, F Street, four oh four, four oh six, four oh seven.
You know, what's the cost going to be if we do that? And, and, and I know that, that it wasn't you, it was Seth that, that sloppily put this together. And I'm not sure if it could have been done a lot better before that, I guess they passed, the state passed a legislation.
Subsequent to this being. Yeah, from now on, I mean, moving forward, without this plan, if, if this twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two plan fails, then in essence, most of our annexation plan is going to be dead, and we'll have to go for each one of these areas that we're going to try and take it to the voters. There's, there's a high likelihood that legislature's going to change the period when you can do any, hold any elections to November, so it's going to make it very difficult for a city.
Well, I guess, I mean devil's advocate, but I do think that to have these elections, that we're bringing in the taxpayers to help make that decision. I like that idea, to have these elections. It keeps us accountable to, anyway, let's go through.
So right, right now, we're providing on the water, that area, right? Or not yet?
We have water up there with, with the acquisition of the Deravelli system that we did, the C C N that we did, we now provide, it's city water that's on the north side. If anybody is, there's some of the landowners that have, because they're not in the city limits, they can choose to have their own water wells and sub, 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 sub system. Uh, so those are not using city services. There are some residents up there that we have connected that do have city services.
About trash?
Yeah, yeah, they can, the trash is going to be up there, and again, trash is going to be discretionary, it's going to be outside the city limits, so it will be built if they are doing that. If they choose to do it, we have trash as a, yes, sir.
There's, uh, when I was in Port Stockton, I knew there was some pockets of county in South City Limits, and there was, by understanding, a lot, or if it's still available, were remanded to where you have a certain amount, certain amount of years, where city services was automatically brought in.
Absolutely, yes, sir. And you can, yes, sir. And, and most of the time, if somebody's choosing to do, if we go up there and we're, we're asking a property owner, or a property owner's asking us to provide city services, we ask them to voluntary annex it. So we'll do that at the same period of time, and where you get that. Difficulty that you do in that is you could have every other property having city services.
My understanding, Larry had a big contingent of people that don't want us.
Absolutely.
At that time, I was the same way. We've got a lot of work to do inside our city, streets, curves, sewer, water, our systems. And we're inheriting the plays that the county hasn't spent a lot of money in, we're roads over there.
Yes, sir.
So, um, and their grandfathered in, right? If you take them, and they're still grandfathered in, if they sell the property, then he has to go by city rule, or am I reading that wrong?
They do, they do.
Yeah. I've also heard.
There will be, there will be some ordinances that would be, that they would be affected by, there's no doubt about it.
I've also heard that there were some people that wanted to be annexed, but they were outnumbered, so they didn't show up.
Well, I mean, a lot of the ones, and I've had, I've had people from both sides. I mean, I've met with Mr. Longoria a couple of times, and we had discussions, and, uh, I understand his, his perspective and everything from that standpoint. And I also heard, had some that came in that were asking about wanting it the other way. And again, I don't, I mean, can I quantify? I can tell you, we had more people coming to city council against the annexation. We didn't have any of the taxpayers that were up there coming for annexation. But they came in to the office and had these conversations and said, well, when am I going to get these services? Well, it's a process that you have to go through. So some of them, and again, it's, I mean, government and annexation is kind of, it's complicated, and trying to explain it and make sure that we disseminate the information, the public hearings are great, but all of us know that when we have our public hearings, we get a handful of people. We don't get the majority of the people, and that's the difficulty that we run into.
I'll just go back to what I was saying earlier, what is the benefit to the city? To go and annex this particular piece of land?
The necessity for growth, Randy? If we, if we choose not to annex, we do not grow.
Well, I mean, there's already growth out there, you know, there's already people out there. So I don't see much room to grow out there. I see a lot of room to grow this way, and maybe this direction in the south, but I don't see much room in there.
Well, and that's where we're roped in and tied down to the plan that was submitted back in twenty-seventeen, eighteen, seventeen?
Twenty seventeen, it wasn't done well.
No, I can't, yeah, I'm not, I wasn't here, so I'm not going to say it was done well or bad.
That's why.
I'm just saying, if we don't follow it, we give it up.
But if we don't do this, then if we don't continue with our annexation, annexation plan, and it gets dissolved or whatever, then we don't have the area on the other side of those people to annex in, to grow, correct?
Yeah, or south, we have to start, we have to start issuing individual plans that way, yes, ma'am.
The thing that, to piggyback off of Randy's, let me know if this has changed. When we annex someone, we have five years still to come up with a proposed plan to offer sewer and water?
We have three years.
Three years?
Yes, sir.
That's just the plan?
No, we have to provide them water within three, we have to provide city services within three years.
Okay, within three years?
Yes, sir. And I can tell you that when we were looking at this the last time, and we did not have the C C N from the Deravelli yet, it would have taken a lot more effort. Now we have the water up there, and it would mean that we'd have some sewer installation stuff every time.
And what happens if we fall short of that market?
Uh, it can be, they can request that it be annexed, yes, sir.
Something I want to look into, somebody was asking me some of those questions from twenty-twenty-one, that was annexed in twenty-twenty-one. And that's something that maybe with our new software, we're going to understand, the water lines, sewer, all that stuff?
Absolutely, yes, sir, with the G I S piece that we're pulling in there, yes, sir. It'll make a lot more sense, and, and anybody, it'll be attached to our website. Right now, we have a, a G I S map with water and sewer attached to the website. It is not a hundred percent up to date, and we're working on fixing that stuff.
That was one of the biggest pushbacks I was getting during the campaign is, of course, I can't believe until I get in there with everything working on, saying we're annexing this, but they're not providing within the guidelines what they say that they're providing. Now they were on the subject of something I might look into.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
If you see the cost too, the cost of us to do that, and the benefit too? See, the benefit, you know, the, well, how would the city benefit, dollar wise?
Dollar wise?
Projections?
It's overturned, I can put that together, Randy, it depends on the number of connections. Uh, the difficulty that we run into, we'd have to let Philip do the plan, so I know exactly how many properties are affected. And if each one of those properties chose to get one meter, I can tell you something. But if any of those properties were subdivided, and they had six meters because they had different tenants on, on a piece of property, that's going to be, that's going to, I'm going to have to give you a range in order to give you an idea on that. And most of it's going to be water, sewer, and trash, honestly. And there would be some property tax related. Last time, I can tell you, when we had these conversations, that the, the city's portion of the property tax piece of it would increase, I'm going to say less, and I'm just going to use it as an example, because it wasn't totally different, by a hundred dollars. The benefit that, that any of those people that are using city services would have, they would be, it would, it would mean about a hundred and eight dollars a year. So it's not going to be a significant number, because they, right now, they qualify if they're using water, they're outside, they're outside the city limits, those are the much higher pressure rate than they are within the city limits. So the water rates would reduce, and that's where the savings would have been deployed.
I feel that they chose to live out in the county for the reason they chose not to reside in the city, to not have to follow the ordinance, like, different requirements.
Yes, ma'am.
And I feel that the last time that this was brought forth, you know, people came up here and they expressed their opinions about it, and that's the thing, people have to come up here, they have to let us know how they feel about it. I personally, I'm not, I'm all for the growth and development of Pecos, but I think there's a way, a correct way and a respectful way to make sure the property owners and everybody is, I mean, not everybody's going to agree, I, I get that, but it just needs to be put together better.
And we're stuck with this format. And we're stuck with this formula, which was only a long time ago.
We did. That was approved in 2017.
We should have gone for the north, which is already business, which is already developed over there. We should have gone for the north, 45.
It does, and I don't know what the, I, 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 I'd be lying to you if I told you I understood the structure and the way it was put together, because I didn't know how this planned.
They ran and set the, the Buddha on the city itself.
And they anticipated from that standpoint that most of the development was going to go north.
Yeah.
And from what we're seeing, just from that standpoint, we're seeing more growth to the south right now. But we can't just, we can't arbitrarily flip which areas we're going to.
Sorry, I look at the, oh, go ahead.
I mean, if you want money for the city, I pay a hundred and thirty-five dollars a month for trash. And somewhere around a hundred and fifty to three hundred on water, depending on how much I use it. Like you said, we get charged a lot more because we're outside the city.
Yeah.
You know, and we understand that. You know, the water we drop and the trash we drop, that'd be all the money that the city loses. There's probably a hundred and twenty-five dumpsters out there. And like I said, you know, I'm just saying, that's just an observation. We pay more, but we don't mind it because we don't want to be part in the city, we don't buy by the city regulations.
You know, if we had to go to elections, you know, it's something we would have to sell to the people. Say, hey, this is the benefit we will get, you know, to get that election won, we'd have to justify it. Which I see the proper way to do it, justify it, say, hey, the city has this potential to recover this much tax money and grow the city. So I don't, I can't see that much wrong with the election. You know, it takes more work. You know, this thing that Rod, Rod, I didn't know Rod was involved in it, but said, you know, I just don't like it.
It's just going to, all it will do, and my concern, the reason I'm bringing it back, is because I think it's the quickest way to expedite our growth. Because what it will do is, if we have to go to election, we're not going to try to do all of these at one time. We can't afford to do that. So it's going to take, it's going to, it's going to take our growth timeline from, you know, two years to eight to 10 years. That's the issue that it's going to do. And it will slow things down.
But I also want the taxpayers to buy in 2022.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have, what if we go ahead and start the process, all the letters go out, but we decide not to annex part of it, but annex, can we do annex part of it, not all of it?
It's what council's, council's direction. And I mean, this, this piece that we're doing now is just to start the letter processing. It's not going to do anything else. We're not making a decision to say we're annexing today. That's not happening. This is just the process that the state mandates that we have to go through.
Okay, we can do that.
You know, with annexation, though, you impose ordinances, you're now part of the city. And we're going to require more code enforcement, more staff. And I don't want to be the devil's advocate here, but we got to get what we have already under control first before we go get rid of other people's rooster coops and other stuff, banned vehicles and junkyards that got thrown out in these county properties. So, I mean.
They don't even clean up the main corridors. We can't even get them to follow the ordinances in town. So why are we going to go out into the county when they're self-sufficient? They're, they're doing it the way they chose to, with the resources that they find that's right for them. So I agree.
I think we need to start within, start cleaning up, and then we annex as we go to grow our town. But we need to clean the inside first.
Well, I believe with our timeframe that we have because of this, you know, timeframe that we have for 2028, I think we need to start the process of annexation. But like you said, if we can, you know, specifically say what we're going to annex, because we're going to have to annex if we're going to continue growing. We just can't continue growing south. There's stuff back here up north, there's already things there that have been built that are nowhere part of it, because nobody followed, followed it. So I believe that we need to start the process and then work it, fine-tune it, what we really want. Because I'm at that area, I worked that area. In some of that area, we don't want no part of it. I can tell you, it's a junker. And I worked there for years. So there's stuff there that we don't need inside our city limits. But there's stuff there that was started and never finished. There's new lines there, there's water hydrates, because they never followed through with what was going to do so. I think we need to start the process, but then fine-tune, however we work it, fine-tune what it is that we, we don't need or what, you know, not to affect. Because just looking at the map, there's places there that we really need to annex. That's just my opinion. Because I was against it the first time. But now, because of the growth that's coming, I like to see, we can't stop.
This is 27, this is 26. So we're talking about this and this. This purple and this, this two yellow. This is Lindsay addition.
Lindsay additions later on.
And then this is.
Is the addition part of this too?
Twenty-one and twenty-two of this. And that's where, that's where from council's standpoint, once the process is started and we notify everybody, that's where you can say, you know what, this area, we're going to exclude it, this area, we're going to exclude it.
Lindsay addition.
I didn't advise this, Randy.
Well, this is, that's the worst two spots to start.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we start the process. We'll have the people come in, who will go to assess this plan. And I'm pretty sure Lindsay addition will have their groups come in and protest. And we'll just go from that angle. We're just starting the process. That's all we're doing, sending out. So I think the motion will be approved. Resolution 2511-04R, as stated.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Saldana to approve Resolution 25-11-04R as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilman Graham voting against. We will go on to item F6, discuss, consider Resolution 25-11-05R, a resolution authorizing the Reeves County Appraisal District Board of Directors to approve the purchase of a building located at 320 South Oak Street to operate the Reeves County Appraisal District Office. Strategic Goal Five, promote open and consistent communication, Charles Leno.
Mayor and Council, Charles Leno, City Manager, this is something that is required from the Reeves CAT. They're looking at relocating their office. It's, they've outgrown it, and they're trying to update it. And so they came up with four different options. They did explore it, and their board looked at it and voted on it. And they're choosing the cheapest option, which is great for all of us taxpayers because we adore a piece of Reeves CAT each year. It's a pro rata piece, and we get the smallest piece. But they're looking at relocating over here on Oak Street. And so this is something just asking for our blessing on them purchasing the new unit.
Good?
I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, it's good.
Mayor, I think the motion will be approved, Resolution 25-11-05R, as stated.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Carrasco to approve Resolution 25-11-05R as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll second. So I'm on the board.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
It didn't discuss. Okay. Motion carries with Councilman Graham abstaining. Item F7, discuss, consider Resolution 25-11-06R, a resolution appointing a member to the Reeves County Appraisal District Board of Directors, Strategic Goal, oh no, Charles Leno. Oh, we got missed.
Mayor and Council, it's going to be open in communication.
Okay.
Because it does have to.
25.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Council, Charles Leno, City Manager, this is what we have to do each period that they go. And they allow new officers to this currently. Councilman Graham serves on that board. But it's up to Mayor and Council to appoint some, appoint or reappoint someone from this group to act as a board member on Reeves CAT.
I'm confused by their board members here, really, all these. The last time I went to a meeting, there was different board members there. There was Chuck, Louison.
Well, there's a different board, yeah. There's a review board and.
Yes.
Oh, this is just an operating board. And we have, we get to appoint one member to that board.
So Randy, right now, is that?
Randy is that person. Is there anybody else that might have interest in it?
I think the motion will keep Randy.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Carrasco to appoint Randy to continue as director. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think the other one.
Because he didn't say no, we're okay.
You know, I think the other one could have voted. He could have voted. Yeah.
Yeah. It's fine. It carries anyway.
For the record. He said yes.
And we'll go to item F8, discuss, consider Resolution 25-11-07R, a resolution authorizing application for financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board for wastewater system improvements. Strategic Goal Seven, enhance Pecos infrastructure network, Charles Leno.
Mayor and Council, Charles Leno, City Manager, what this pertains to is, with the legislature that was passed this last year, there's money out there for development of wastewater, water and wastewater systems. This would complete, this would allow us to apply for, right now, it's going to be a forgivable loan. So what that means is you have the loan on the books, but after you complete it, if you complete it within two years, you can, within the prescribed timeline, it's not two years, within the prescribed timeline, the debt is going to be forgiven by Texas Water Development Board. So it's a way that we can get into debt, finalize and finish the project at potentially no cost. If we did not qualify for the full amount of forgiveness, it is going to be a low interest loan. Right now, it's at 1.35%. So it's still pretty favorable conditions. So my recommendation to you all is that we allow EHT, who's doing the wastewater treatment plant that we talked about earlier, Randy, to apply for this. They're going to do all of the legwork for applying for the loans and everything for us on the app, so that we can get this to complete the wastewater treatment plant in Phase Three with the, where it'll be a membrane fiber plant.
Where's it, okay, that's the water desalination?
No, this is, this is our wastewater design.
Okay, over here.
Yes, sir. Right now, we're, right now, we're in Phase Two of a lagoon system. We're doing one and two. So we increased our lagoon size by 30%. We've, Phase Two is increasing it by another 40%. That'll take care of the community. Phase Three is going to turn, is going to change it to make it a modern wastewater treatment plant, which is called a membrane, membrane fiber plant, that will allow the discharge to be, I mean, it gets it to where if you wanted to take it through RO, it could be available for reuse. But that's not in our plans right now, to reuse water. Yes, sir, absolutely. Hector asked for it too. And I did talk to Chad Conklin, who's our engineer on the, on the, on the wellfield project, and he's wanting to set up something in the next, you know, month or so to where we can get all of us together and we can go on the expeditions and go through the wellfields and the wells and all of that stuff too. And I think it would be beneficial to you all to see exactly where the money's going.
Do we accept it? A second, sorry, okay. I was reading. Have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilwoman Torrio to approve Resolution 25-11-07R as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If the record show the motion carries, go to item F9, update on Red Chair Creatives Marketing and Design, Strategic Goal Five, promote open and consistent communication, Charles Leno.
Mayor and Council, Charles Leno, City Manager, this item is on the agenda because the mayor, Councilman Arona, and I received emails. And this is with a pending matter that the EDC has. And Red Chair is a former person that was doing the website. Now they're no longer doing it. And there's allegations, and again, I'm not going to be the attorney, because I'm not, their attorney can handle it, but that the EDC is utilizing some patented or trademarked logos and stuff on their website. From what I understand, I had conversations with Jimmy, and he said that they've asked for proof of the trademarks. And those haven't been provided yet. But the owner, Monica, with Red Chair, has been reaching out to the mayor and Art and I. I don't know why, how they got their names and stuff like that. Just making us aware. In reality, we don't have a dog in the fight. But I guess since we appoint more members to the EDC, right now, from what I understand, it's in the attorney's hands. And I don't know what we're going to do. But I know that the mayor and I had this conversation. We felt that it was necessary just to make everybody aware. If you hadn't heard about it, it's just to make everybody aware. I don't know that there's anything wrong one way or the other, or if there's anything right. There's a settlement offer that's been thrown out there that we're pretty to. And they're not taking any action on it yet, waiting on, on information.
The email we got yesterday, they have until tomorrow?
Yes.
Or their, or Red Chair is going to start legal proceedings. And I'm like, okay, they're throwing us under the bus here. That's, that was my concern, is that they're bringing County Pecos City into this.
Yeah, and we don't have a dog in this fight. None. That's the reason for bringing it, because to make sure that all of Mayor and Council have the same information. Because the emails have been going directly to Councilman Arona, the mayor, and myself, as well as Jimmy.
And David.
And David Dominguez, the chair, is board president. So they're aware of it. When I talked to Jimmy, he said Bobby's handling it. So I don't know where it's at from that standpoint, or if they're going to get anything.
I just asked Mr. Chover to keep us abreast, just for our information.
Okay.
So this sounds like a unsolicited scam?
No, they, they were, they provided, they were providing the internet services or the website services.
Yeah, webpage.
Prior to this. This was just stopped, you know, six months ago, something like that. They cut the contract off. But Red Chair is alleging that there's logos that are up there that are patented or trademarked.
And photos.
And photos that are, that are trademarked. And I think from the EDC's perspective, they want to see the trademarks in order to do, to make anything.
So when we do a trademark ourselves, let's say, is it ours or the people have created it?
No.
Or is that part of the contract?
It depends on the, on the agreement. If you, if, if we want to do a trademark, you have to go through the U.S. Patent Office to get that trademark. And if you get it, you have it for a period of time. And it would, the ownership of, if we were to do something and we trademarked it that way, the County Pecos City is going to be the owner of that trademark. It's not going to be a third party that would trademark stuff for us.
And is it basically what you're doing for it?
Well, we don't know. We don't know.
Yeah, and, and she's claiming copyright photos and, and and EDC's attorneys asking for proof of the copyright. But they're dragging us into it. So I'm like, okay, everybody needs to be aware that this is going on.
Yeah, I called Jimmy and said, hey, what's this? And I thought all of you got it.
Now, do you know who that Red Chair created, created was?
Yeah.
But I know, I think I know now what you're. I mean, we, we use Red Chair on some stuff for the city to do the banners, the little banners that we have right now.
And do we still do?
Yeah. Yeah, but they're not doing our website yet. We do our own.
Okay, item F10, discuss, consider ordinance 25-10-01, and ordinance amending the master fee schedule, business fees, second reading, strategic goal one, sustainable economic development, Randy Graham.
Upstated.
When I first ran for the C Council, I wanted to really push making Pecos business friendly. This is just a very small deal too. It's not. It's not, you know, it's not material, it's not anything like that, but I just, you know, to get that attitude, that influence, that people, you know, were willing to work with even small businesses.
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's why I brought this one up.
Yeah, and this one, the, the modification that was asked for and that was approved last time in the first reading was to modify the non-food vendor. That was temporary, to change that rate from three hundred dollars to one hundred dollars.
Was it two fifty or?
It was three hundred.
It was three hundred and it's down to one hundred.
Okay.
And so this is the second reading of that ordnance, ordinance amending the master fee schedule.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Can I examine it?
Yeah, you can. You can, Randy. Absolutely.
I'll make a motion, uh, according to ordinance twenty-five to...
Second reading. Second reading. May I make a...
I'd like to, I'm sorry, I stepped away really quick, but I'd like to talk about this here really quick. Just go back, but how are we, Cindy, with other cities? I mean, this is double edged sword. We've got to be friendly to smaller businesses too without overtaxing them, but what was your dog, I wasn't your last council. What was your concern?
Uh, to make it business friendly, I had a couple, you know, I asked about it, and one person goes, dogs.
Yes, sir.
So that's my dog and probably his.
Where do we stand? Like, what was, I'm looking at the vendor fees.
That's trying to catch that.
Where do we stand with the vendors? Where are we at now and what are we pushing for? Vendor fees, the only thing that we're changing on this one right now from last time, Hector, is one, that's for the temporary vendors that are non-food vendors.
Right.
Is changing the fee from three hundred to one hundred. That's the only thing that we're talking about. We're not really losing there. We're just kind of, you know, I have a dog, I have dogs too, and it's difficult for me to find groomers. I have to go to the bauery even sometimes. Mine has, they don't even got time for me, so my wife don't like me and I groom my own dog. I'll never do that again, but...
That's a small one to walk around.
You know, so I look at it as two ways. I mean, we've got to be more business friendly too, because we're going to need other services in the long run. Right? So I, I agree. I'll, I'll, we second. But I just wanted to just double check.
You're seconding it?
No, I second, somebody already seconded it.
Yeah.
Yep, you, okay.
Because I have a dog in the fight.
So we have a motion to Councilman Graham, a second from Councilman Arona, to approve ordinance twenty-five dash ten dash oh one as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If the record show the motion carries, go to item F twelve, update on the Pecos Area Chamber of Commerce C V B. And I was just wondering where we are on the dis, dissolvement, dissolution? How, how do you say that? Dissolution?
Dissolution.
Dissolution. Yes. Okay. If we know what their status is.
From what I understand is they're working through it. They have an attorney and a student right now, and it should be dissolved, I hope, by the end of the year.
Are there any hot monies that they have not been...
That's what we're looking at. I have not seen the recap of the financials. Last time when I talked to Matt, he said, that's the funds left, but I need to see. Because when we did our last issuance, and that's what Wendy provided with you all, we provided, did it in a quarterly installment, and that was going to be for the salaries for the executive director and the assistant.
Right. And this is all...
Those kind of, those kind of went away almost immediately, so I do not know that the funds were used, or if how much of the funds were used, but they could have only been used for salaries. So if they had nobody working there, they could have used the personnel. So I think there should be some money that should be returned back. And I think that'll happen with the dissolution.
But this invoice that they sent us was just for the first quarter.
That's all we paid us for first quarter.
Right. So, I mean, that's all we've given them, is that money, which they, they spent that, but I'm thinking that Joe and John didn't leave until April. Well, no, that was in December. And Joe was still there January, February, and March, but I'm thinking John didn't leave until April or May. So they, we may owe them some money.
Yeah, but I think, we may, but they may have some residual that was left over from the primary...
I want to see financials before we...
Yeah.
Yeah, give us, give us money.
I agree.
And, and I can tell you that I have not had a request for any additional funds. So I, I'm with you, Councilwoman woman Trujillo. I want to see the finance, the recap.
Right. I mean, I know that they had come and they had gotten hot money for different things, and I don't know, I don't know if we ever even got a recap on any of that.
We did not.
So get us a closed statement.
Did you take this long to dissolve something? You know, the legacy inquiry to the attorney, or see what's holding it up?
Well, I think they just voted on it. Several left, but I think they just voted on it two weeks ago.
So they've had a quorum, yeah?
Yeah, they, well, their quorum, their quorum right now, and their board is going to have, they have three people on their executive board, or executive committee, which is going to be Matthew Flores, Matt Elliott, and Marissa Flores. And they have another board member sitting on there that is Sarah Neckles. That's the only four that have gone to any meetings recently. And so those are the ones that are aware. And if they had any executive session piece, Sarah doesn't know about that.
So that's not a, technically, that those four, not a quorum, are they?
I don't know.
But if that's all they could muster, that's trying to do business, I'm understanding.
Well, yeah, no, I, yeah, no, I understand, because they had, they had reduced their number of board members down to thirteen. So I don't know how many board members they have. So if you look at it from that standpoint, if you're looking at four and you have thirteen, that's not a quorum.
No.
But if you, if everybody's quit, and you haven't filled them, and you only have four, is that a quorum?
Well, what's our, we're over the term. We're overseeing it?
No, none at all. We're not even affiliated. The only affiliation we had was them asking for hot dollars for, for the C V B.
Did they, did they have to go through the hot money?
Yeah, they did. Yes, sir.
And we approved it or...
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's what I want to know, is all the stuff that we approved for them to spend money on, was that money spent on, on those projects?
Yeah. And we don't have a recount.
Yeah.
Hopefully we will.
We, we should, because if they close it down, we ought to, if their attorney's doing his job, he's going to have some accountability to where he knows that hot funds have to go back.
If there's anything left, that's probably where it's going to end.
So we can't really contact the attorney?
Probably not, Randy. They don't have to talk to us. They'll probably claim attorney-client privilege on that.
I mean, the only, to me, the only thing we have, say so in is the hot money, and they need to...
Make sure they get a recounting of that. Yes, ma'am.
So we can't ask for that? We got authority?
I've already asked for that. I've asked him that for that, and he doesn't have anything for me yet. He hasn't been able, I don't know that they've done the books, so...
How long ago did you ask, Charles?
Most recent, probably two weeks ago. Right before he came to Rotary and was going to, I don't know what he was going to do, but he had a talk, he had a talk with Senator Stann, or some of the, with the mayor and a couple of other people that, I think it was all of...
I want it now.
Oh, that's right. The mayor accused herself, so. He talked to Benetta and Amber about Golden Girl. I don't know what they talked about, because there's a big issue about who's going to get Golden Girl. And all I can tell you there is, we were told, and the mayor got told the same thing, is that we're putting it out, and they were going to, they were going to let the different groups ask for Golden Girl, and then they're going to make a board decision and determine who got to have Golden Girl. Because Rotary, the Rotary has asked for it back. But I know that Marissa Flores also created a nonprofit, and she wants to take it on and keep it. So I don't know.
Is it a nonprofit?
I do not know who the nonprofit she created was. I don't know who the nonprofit is that she created.
What was the classification of the charter?
It's a five oh one, uh...
C four or C three?
I think it's a four. It was a four. It wasn't a C three. It's not a, it's not a charitable. And what a charitable...
So for Sharon, it was, if she, if it's going to be, if she takes it over, I mean, that's going to be, that doesn't, they're going to return any money immediately, I think.
Yeah, they did. Well, but they would only, the funds for that would only go to Golden Girl. Only the Golden Girl funds.
And I don't think Golden Girl ever came and asked for...
No, hot money.
As they have it.
They supposedly have a certificate. They're supposed to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so if Golden Girl never asked for any hot funds, there's no hot funds coming back from Golden Girl. But they asked for hot funds for other projects, and we just need to make sure the money was spent on those projects.
Or returning the money.
For some carnivals and night in Pecos and a couple of other things.
I wonder if they're current on the filings, payroll tax filings and income tax.
I have no clue, Randy.
You need, you need to school.
It may get to that point where, you know, an IRS is full of deals.
Yeah, no, it could. Yeah, and I don't know if they follow the franchise returns to where they make sure they're current, and that's been important to me.
So we got executive session?
We did.
Okay. So we're going to go to executive session under government code five five one point oh seven one, consultation with attorney, five five one oh seven two, real estate, five five one point oh seven four, personnel issues, and five five one point oh eight seven, economic development, and it is seven fifteen. Okay. So we're going to go to executive session under government code five five one point oh seven one consultation with attorney five five one oh seven two real estate five five one point oh seven four personnel issues and five five one point oh eight seven economic development and it is seven fifteen.
Second open session, it is 8:16 PM. Do we have anything from executive session to bring to open session?
No ma'am.
Okay. Discuss items for the next city council meeting, I've got the ARABED contract. We want comparisons to look at.
Mm-hmm. Cindy, where are we on those water rates?
Um, we're compiling and I'm sure for the...
For what?
Water rates.
What, water rates?
I think the master schedule for water rates.
Has Bobby Botka and his team reached out to you?
They have not.
I'll go to bring up chairs but...
Anything else for the next meeting?
We said Barnmore City in sixty days, do we need to keep up with that?
I'm going to keep up with that.
Okay.
Nothing? Okay, then we are going to adjourn. It is 8:17 PM.